I'd like to invite Troop 888 to please come on up and they will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Welcome everyone. With us tonight, we have our Director of Finance, Mark Medler, City Manager, Chris Weinage, Clerk of Council, Misty Clark, Dave Kennedy, City Manager, City Solicitor, Joe Braun, Fire Chief, Art Huber, Police Chief, Michael Gabrielson, Former Council Members Kent Blair and Todd Osborne. We have our current Loveland Valentine Lady in the House, an Ori. Which brings me to the, was probably the saddest news any of us have heard this week. Peggy Goodwin passed away. I don't think there's anybody in this room that has not heard that name. She was a former City Council Person, 2006 Valentine Lady. She was involved in the Life Food Pantry, ran the Farmer's Market with Woody for I don't know how many years, involved with Loveland Citizens Police Academy, and I probably could go on for 20 minutes. I don't think there's any facet of life here in Loveland that Peggy Goodwin wasn't somehow involved in, in volunteering and helping any chance she could with literally anything. Even my husband, who doesn't know many people, he saw her picture, "I remember her, she was lovely. She was so nice to me." That was Peggy. She just was untiring in her devotion and love for this city. So, that is a huge void that I think this city has to shoulder at this point, and certainly we're, it's a little less bright in Loveland without Peggy Goodwin. And my understanding is her husband is also not doing, he has having some health issues. So, would ask everyone to please keep her husband and her family and friends, the Valentine Ladies, when we all didn't know her as well as the Valentine Ladies and others that were so close to her, and I know how we feel about it. So, I can't imagine how those that really spent more time and knew her even more than we did feel about it. So, that is a huge loss, and let's just keep them all in our prayers. Okay, with that, we have something fun to do with Arianna Wilson. We haven't, we should do that. Let's roll call. I got myself flustered.
Mayor Bailey.
I am here.
Mr. Bateman.
Here.
Mr. Goodyear.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Here.
And Mr. Ping.
Here.
All right, now let's bring Arianna Wilson to the podium.
So, as part of the preparations for Loveland's 150th anniversary next year, the Sesquicentennial Committee issued a call for art earlier this year inviting community to help redesign the city flag. Dave's displaying it for you. There's our winner. Loveland artists, those who live or work in the city and were at least 18 years old, were encouraged to submit up to three original flag designs. All artwork had to be an original creation. The contest was led by committee members, Gina Bell Smith, Debbie Combs, with additional support from committee member Peter Sexton, who assisted with color matching to ensure the design aligned with the city's branding. We received an outstanding response, with 68 designs being submitted. After careful review, the Sesquicentennial Committee selected the winning design by Arianna Wilson. She titled the design, "The Heartland," and she shared that her inspiration came from the scenic views along the Loveland Bike Trail and the Little Miami Scenic River, noting that "it was clear that we put our hearts into preserving the history and beauty of our land." So, we're excited to unveil her sign for the upcoming Sesquicentennial Celebration, and thank all the artists who contributed to their creativity in this milestone project. Arianna grew up in Loveland. She's a 2016 graduate of Loveland High School, and she's currently working at the Narrow Path and designs their chalkboards for them. So, the mayor take over from here.
I'm afraid I was going to forget.
This is for you. Congratulations.
I think that's amazing, 68 entries, one that we had that many people that were interested in helping us design our flag, but for you to be the winner out of 68 entries is wonderful. And this is the first time any of us have seen it. I think it's awesome. So, thank you. Well done.
Thank you. You know, I was pretty sure a flag design with the Loveland Frogman was going to win. I was a little insecure about that, but when I was thinking of references and what I wanted to embody for Loveland, I've been here, I grew up here, and my mama lives right down the way, and I've worked here since I was 16, and this city and this town means a lot to me, and everybody that has supported me, I am very insecure about my art and my ability, and those wonderful people over there always encourage me and say that I am better than what I think I am. So, without their encouragement, I probably would have even entered this contest, but just to be a part of something, a part of what you guys have, that I grew up with in this town that I really feel loved in, it's an honor. So, thank you.
Hold this in front. Don't let her forget. I did one, you did your one.
Thanks for letting me go ten months. Yeah, it's really fun.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you guys there. Congratulations, so thank you.
When I knew you, you had it.
You gotta hold it up.
Congratulations.
Oh, I got it.
Chris, do you want to look at it? Never mind. See it now.
You're good.
I had overs.
How cute. That's awesome.
Okay. All right, now, another sad part of this meeting, when we say goodbye to two of our council members. So, our thought is we'll speak from here, and then Neil, you're first, if you have a few words, and then we have a few things for you. Okay? So, Neil, this is his last meeting as a Loveland City Council Person. I met-
For this term.
What's that?
For this term.
Oh, you're going to run again? Awesome. I love it. So, I met Neil 2015 when I was first on council, which was a rather tumultuous time in the history of Loveland, to say the least. And it was really fun to see Neil's fire and love for this city, and his very strong sense of right and wrong and righteousness, and is not afraid to stand up for what he believes is right. So, it was a natural that after all his hard work those couple of years, that Neil ran for a seat on council, and has served since 2017. And I've really enjoyed watching you sort of grow into the role of council person. It's always hard when you're first elected. I had the issues myself of not being, not having a lot of confidence in what I brought to the table and in speaking, and you've just grown into a wonderful ambassador for the city, and your insight on things that some of us don't have as far as things like construction or projects that are going on in the city. You just bring something that was very helpful, I think, to us in making decisions. And I just appreciated these years watching, especially the fact that you grew up here. You've lived here for, I don't know, 60 something years. So, you brought a perspective that way too, that you could sort of keep us grounded into what Loveland had been, and make sure we stayed true to that as we tried to sort of navigate inevitable progress. And so, I think that for me, that's what I appreciated of what you brought these last few years in your honesty and integrity. And I've really enjoyed serving with you. I'm going to miss you. I'm honored to call you a friend at this point, and just appreciate everything you did for this city, and you will continue to do in other ways. Would anyone else like to say anything? Mr. Hart?
I would say, thank you, Mr. Orr, for your service to the city first and foremost. But thank you also for your friendship. Four years ago when I ran for the first time, both Neil and Ted were incredible to lean into and just get some insight on how it's normal to not feel super confident what you're going into, and it's normal to be kind of nervous about what you're doing. But they were always, both Neil and Ted, incredible, incredible backbone for me at times when I was not feeling so sure. Specifically, Mr. Orr, your unabashed, unwavering passion for this city has never dimmed in the four years that I've been up here with you. It's incredible that the amount of love that you have for this community, and also have a vision to understand that it can't stay as it was, but also keeping us same time on the rails of not moving too fast. I think your institutional knowledge of this place is going to be impossible to replace. You don't replace somebody with the years of experience in a town that you have, and your lens of living here, being here, working here, having family here, friends here, schools, everything. You don't replace that lens. So, I appreciate everything you've brought to the city, but personally, I appreciate everything you've brought to me. So, thank you for your service.
Mr. Ping?
Yeah, so, like John, I had the opportunity to run four years ago with Neil and Ted as well. And, you know, many people that I've talked to that have run together will make the comment that you kind of get a different relationship with people doing something like that, that it's kind of creates a little bit of a kindred sort of relationship. And so, you know, that was kind of fun and neat. But I actually first ran across Neil several years before that. The theater had a fire, and I was asked to provide some structural assistance, and this contractor was volunteering time to help out on the project, and that contractor was Neil. And, you know, the loss of Peggy this week is, as the mayor so eloquently put it, just the loss of the volunteerism. And when you see people that volunteer like Neil does, it's a special thing. The Adirondack Chairs that Councilman Blair and Ori put together, I mean, those kinds of things are what makes a community special. And Neil brought that sense of volunteerism as well to his role on council, and that's something that I certainly appreciated along with the things, I'll ditto, I guess, Mr. Hart's comments, that, you know, the insecurities that come with coming onto this council, that certainly is something that Neil was always there with a smile on his face and like, "Oh, it's going to be fine," and you know, and it just, he was a very good supporter all along the way. And so, I certainly appreciate your time here, Neil, and your dedication to the city.
Thanks.
Mr. Bateman?
Well, Neil, I'll echo the same sentiments that my colleagues have so far put forward, and that's first, a real debt of thanks is owed to you, I think, not just from us here for your friendship and service, but from the community, I think, because in a time when change was afoot in Loveland, and as others have mentioned, you know, your long history here gave you such a great perspective to lend, but at a time when I feel like our, the spirit of our community was being threatened, your sense of what was right outshone everyone else's. You jumped to the forefront immediately and started to set in motion what became a council here that has acted in the best interest of the citizen every single time, without fail. And you leading that charge as part of the resident-led change initiatives that took place around the time when I started to pay attention. And we knew each other back when I was a kid out of college and bartending in Loveland and getting a sense of what my hometown was, was, and was becoming. And to see you take the reins of community advocacy like that really was an inspiration for me personally. And so, I will, you know, on behalf of everyone in the community thanking you personally, I'll say that that has really made an impact in the course of what I've decided to do with my life, giving to the community in however I can, and trying to do so with a resident, you know, from a resident's perspective, especially downtown, this particular neighborhood, I think is near and dear to all of our hearts, but we have a similar neighbor feel around here. And I've gotten to know your family, and your family's gotten to know mine as it's grown over these years. So, it's just, it's a beautiful tribute to the spirit of the community. And I think I'm hopeful you'll enjoy the retirement and the time that you can actually maybe receive some of the blessings that you've given to the community in so many ways. So, I look forward to seeing you around town and bumping into you as often as I can, and just celebrating the fact that we've got such a great town, and that we're both lucky to know each other as we live here in it. So, thank you.
Mr. Goodyear?
Well, Mr. Orr, I've served the least amount of time with you. It's been two years now, but I will echo what Mr. Hart and others have said, that first of all, one thing that has always struck me about you is you've always been very open and welcoming to me, even when you had no idea who I was. You always have a smile on your face, you always have an open hand to shake my hand and to be willing to help me in any way you possibly could. And I agree, you know, you start on city council, you have an idea of what it's going to be like, but you don't really know, and you get into the work of it, and having people with experience that are open and willing to help you is a big thing. And I think that, the other thing that always impressed me about you, and the same with Mr. Phelps, I mean, you know, kind of grounding of what your service is. You're doing this not for some political reason, or for some reason of attaining power, something like that. You're doing this to help your community. And that shines through in what you say, and how you approach this job, and how you've handled yourself. And what I can tell you personally is that I found you to be a very good, a very kind, and very generous man. And I certainly appreciate the chance to serve with you, and I appreciate the service you gave to the community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Sure. I think, Neil, between you and your wife, Steve, you know everybody in town, and that has served you really well. And I think a lot of people probably don't know just how much you do behind the scenes, research-wise, sweat equity-wise. You'll talk to people in the community about issues that are perhaps before council or will be. And I especially recognize since your retirement, you've spent a lot more time, I think, doing just those things, and it's for the benefit of the city, and it's well above and beyond what, you know, the job calls for. But I really have appreciated being on council with you and getting to know you, and he's the "take the shirt off his back to give to you" guy, and love you.
Is there anything you'd like to say, Mr. Orr?
Oh, there are a few things. First of all, I want to start off with Troop 888. I was a member of Troop 888 when I was, I don't know, 50 something years ago. So, good job tonight. So, as I look around this desk, and I have so much to be fortunate for, so much to be grateful for, to be part of this well-run city. And that's the bottom line of this whole thing I'm going to talk about. This city is so well-run. So, some special thank yous to Dave, Chris, Misty, and Joe. Thank you for all your dedication to our jobs, to doing your jobs, for your help attitudes, for your willingness to do whatever it takes to get the job done. John, I appreciate the time we've had on council together. Congratulations on the second term. I personally want to thank you for being a good steward of watching our salt supply. Thank you for making Loveland a great place for families. That was one of your slogans. And thank you for your leadership role at Loveland.
Hey Neil, pull your microphone off.
Yeah, okay. Kip, thank you for serving four years on council with me. We ran together. Thank you for your role on Law and Ordinance Committee. Well done. Thank you for taking a engineer's way of thinking through our process, analytical, problem-solving, creative thinking, helping us to understand better as a council. Andy, thank you for serving multiple committees in two terms on council now. Thank you for each meeting, making it to each meeting while keeping us thinking whether you're going to take it on time, including tonight, you're a couple minutes early. And thank you for your sense of humor, as well as keeping us up to date on your sporting news. Brian, thank you also for serving our council for two years with us. Thank you for serving on the Law and Ordinance Committee, and thank you for your legal approach to keeping us honest as a council. Mayor, or Vice Mayor Phelps, Ted, thank you for serving three terms, 12 years. Congratulations, and serving as our Vice Mayor as well. Thank you for being a great public servant and for our friendship. Mayor Bailey, thank you for 10 years on council, and eight years as our mayor. Thank you for taking a common sense approach to your leadership, and thank you for doing what you believe is right, no matter what the naysayers say. Thank you for your dedication to this city and for being a good friend. I want to thank all the residents of Loveland for giving me the opportunity to serve, as well those who voted for me. Thank you, Chief Huber, Chief Caberson, for your support. I want to thank all the staff, department leaders, members of commissions and committees for making Loveland a great, clean, safe place to live. I want to thank my wife of 42 years for staying behind me, for being my good proof reiterator, and inspiring me along the way and helping me along my campaigns as well. During my tenure on council, I've served on the Finance Commission, Public Relations Committees, and Public Relations Committee, Susan, Historic Preservation Committee, and CIC. I feel I have done my best in my decision-making, and I feel I've devoted myself wisely. I've never been comfortable at public speaking. What I'm comfortable at is construction, someone brought this up earlier, construction, demolition, property management, construction management, project management, and a lot, and lives. I've been referred to as the go-to, get-it-done guy. I even have a shirt that told Steve I'm going to wear this to council tonight, but I didn't. It says "go-to guy." Give me the facts, let me construct my thoughts and ideas, and I'll build my conclusion. I feel I followed this path in my decision-making in every vote I made in council. Making the decision to vote, to run for council was not easy for me. I was asked many times over the 30 years, mostly by council member, Vice Mayor, and Mayor, Rob Rice-Greber. Thank you, Rob, for being persistent. I stayed away from politics because I did not like the negative rhetoric. It just wasn't my company. However, 2016, 2017, myself, many residents of Loveland, witnessed a very dark behavior, behavior within our city council. A very divisive, very, very divisive council meeting. At that, add to that, I'm going to paraphrase a good friend of mine, Kent Blair's council meeting minutes, or speech in 2017. A portion of our city council members were deceitful in their dealings, full of trickery, and unethical. Can't use the words called "duggery," you know, love that. It was just, that was a great speech. Then and there, I decided it's time for me to step forward. We formed a PAC, and we have ultimately recalled our mayor. I bring this up because when we decide to get involved with politics, you take on a commitment that's much bigger than you think, much bigger than you know. You take on the commitment to be responsible, to serve the community, community's best interests, without any predetermined agenda, or to grandstand your thoughts or ideas. This is not the place to do that. Shortly after making the decision to run for city council, I came across a quote from John F. Kennedy, and I'll read this right here. "Let us not seek the Republican answer or the Democrat answer, but the right answer. Let us not seek to fix the blame of the past, let us accept the responsibility for the future." This quote, in my faith, or my inspiration, from what I think I stand for, Brian, you mentioned, "let's do it right, let's do it right the first time, and let's get it done." Being on council for the past eight years has been so rewarding, eventful, thoughtful. Being on council for the past eight years has been so rewarding, eventful, thoughtful. It's been fun and I've enjoyed myself and I've made a lot of great friends. Being a native Lovelander, I can say Loveland is the best place to have grown up. Loveland is the best place to have lived as an adult and Loveland has been the best place to serve my community and residents. Thank you everyone for allowing me to be part of this great, magnificent community.
Actually have something for you. Nice plaque. Have something for you as well?
Already have a badge.
Yeah. Oh, wow.
I'll pull your back. All right. Well done, Neil. Now we'll have a, now we have Mr. Phelps. So I've never served on council without you, Vice Mayor, and I'm really not looking forward to starting now. It's been very comfortable having you as part of this council. When I when I joined this council and was elected in two thousand fifteen, I didn't have a clue and I was elected during a maelstrom, as we have alluded to. It was something else and it was wonderful to have your guiding hand those two years to try to navigate that. You have been just a tremendous resource to me over the last eight years as mayor. And I call you and on you often for advice, for ideas, for to talk me off the ledge at times when I'm teetering very close to it. Sometimes I get a little hot-headed and you calm me down, which is always a good thing. I really appreciated your thoughtful approach to this job. You've never been one that's looking for accolades or or grandstand. It's all about what is best for the city and you've just always been willing to do whatever you could to move the city forward in whatever whatever was asked of you and whatever whatever way that looked like. You certainly are one of the most honest, honorable, upstanding men that I've ever had the pleasure to meet on this council or outside of this council. I value your friendship. I value your conversations I have with you. The working together with you has been wonderful and much like Neil, you've expressed an interest in continuing on working on committees with the city, which thank goodness, because I would hate for both of you to step away from doing that. You bring so much to the city. And twelve years is a long time to serve on on city council and you were reluctant, I know, four years ago to to do so. I begged you to. I hope you are happy with that decision, but I'm happy with that decision. You've been wonderful as a Vice Mayor. I've really enjoyed working with you in that capacity. And you're a big, big shoes to fill on this council and as Vice Mayor and just in everything you've brought to this city. So, thank you very much for everything you've brought. Anyone else have anything they wish to say, Mr. Ping?
Yeah, so I, the first time I met Ted was actually when I was put on the Law and Ordinance Committee, I think. It was either that or Charter Review, one of the two. They happened kind of about the same time. And the there are certain things that you just find about people when you meet them that you realize, oh, this is how this guy is. He's and to make to make a little bit of a jab, he's an honest attorney. Wow. But, you know, when we were when we were on that committee together, you know, one of the things that happened fairly early on is we were discussing, I don't even remember what it was, it was something and we were debating it and Ted had a position and I was kind of taking the opposite position. And I made a comment that at the time I didn't realize how nasty it sounded until it came out of my mouth. And that was, well, yeah, but that's probably why they have people that are not on council on this committee, because I see it differently. And after I said it, I thought, oh, that was kind of harsh. And Ted's reaction was, you know, you're right. I think you're right. And so, yeah, we ought to, we ought to keep it the way it is. And to me, that set the tone for the relationship that I've had with Ted since then. Open-minded, always willing to be thoughtful about things, always thinking of the bigger picture, the broader scope, the city at large, not just the immediate. The number of times that there have been comments and things that have been helpful have been more than I can remember. And so, you know, I I think when I was considering running, one of the things that kind of came up at that time was, well, are are Ted and Neil running for reelection and whether or not that was going to be part of it? It it kind of, again, made it easier having you two guys to to kind of share that time with. And I I greatly appreciate what you guys have done for the city. I'll stop there because I'm first and I got to leave something for everybody else. I'll stop there. Thanks, thanks Ted.
And Ross, good year?
Well, I would say, much like what I said about Mr. Ori Ted, I found you to be open and friendly to me from the very beginning, even when you didn't know me. Obviously, we knew each other a little bit beforehand, because I was on Law and Ordinance with you before I was on council. But I would have to say that when I think about you, the words that come to mind are calm, steady leadership.
Yep.
I mean, that's really what I think of, like, you are someone that has the ability to maintain your focus, to make good rational decisions in whatever the circumstance might be. And I think as a result of that, you're able to lead others to do the same. And so, I I respect that a lot. I respect both of you obviously very much. I respect that a lot about you because that's not an easy thing to be able to do. And I have found you also to be someone who's been open to be friendly to me and and to help me in any way possible, even though I've only been here for a short period of time. And I also think, just like Mr. Ori, I think both of you, what I think matters the most is, as I said, with with Neil, your service is grounded in your love of this community and the fact that you're a good and decent man. And I appreciate the fact that I had the chance to serve with you. Thank you.
Mr. Bayton?
Well, I I remember first meeting Ted as a as a citizen in the in the gallery during the the dark times, as we're referring to them here. But but really, what I remember was there was a meeting particularly chaotic that ended as soon as it began. And and Mr. Phelps was left to de-escalate a very rowdy gallery. And they had questions, they didn't understand what had happened, what was the outcome. And, you know, Ted did his best to explain what had happened and how he saw it and what what the ramifications were and just really did an earnest and honest job of calming everybody down and talking everybody off of what was a potentially volatile situation. And I think as as my colleagues have alluded to, that hallmark characteristic was what I think really has made you an exemplary role model for the rest of us on council in terms of your temperament, your approach, your your candor, your your experience and knowledge and expertise. It's just, it we'd be hard pressed to find a better person, more qualified to serve in this capacity for twelve years. And and it's shown every day that I served on council. And I think, you know, while we, this is unfortunate, it's a it's a day of of nostalgia and recollection and appreciation for all the characteristics and qualities that we're losing after today. But I think really that example that was shown is something that those of us here will continue to carry on, just as just as we've been blessed by the wisdom of councils that came before us. This council will have left a really lasting legacy and twelve years and eight years of service behind that really helps establish a way forward for the for the rest of us that's going to go far beyond, you know, the scope of the daily meetings that we sit through. So, I appreciate your example and I I think that that the city has has benefited greatly from your service and and just thank you so much for for everything.
Mr. Hart?
Ted, thank you for your service. Twelve years, you've almost been on council the entire time I've lived in this city. So, you've represented me and my family for the entire time you've been here, not quite. And I appreciate you, the approach you've always taken. Going back to the first election, your wisdom in the, having already had been through it two times prior to that, you brought a sense of calm to that process that was much needed at times. And in in that, what I figured out very quickly was not that that was just not trying to calm anybody else down, that was just the way you approached things in general on this job. You're very methodical, thought-out, rational. I've not witnessed you, even when I when I know you're a little frustrated about things, the presentation is always calm, it's always level, it's always level-headed, it is, it's never too high, never too low. It's it's always, it always seems to have the right tone for the that the situation calls for. Your decision-making has been fun to watch because of that approach. I can see you thinking through things, I can, and the way you present your ideas causes me to reflect on the way I feel about things, which I appreciate. Twelve years is a is a long time to serve and and I am appreciative that you've given that much service to the city. The city is better for you for you having served. And I I appreciate you as not only a fellow councilman, but also as a friend. So, thank you, sir.
Mr. Ori?
I I to say, I have to start. Nine years ago, when we had this very divisive council there, and Ted, you were always one that kept your calm, you gave your analytical views, you you were always just on point. And I already I already talked a little bit about about you earlier, so, but I just want to say thank you for twelve years. I mean, you did a great job. You were a great servant of the city.
Anything you'd like to say, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm glad we only have seven members of council, because this is a lot. I I respect all of you and enjoyed working with you as well as predecessors at this diocese. And so, what you have said means a lot to me, so thank you very much. You know, I sat down at the breakfast room table here and jotted down a few things. I I won't be more than an hour here. Obviously, we're in the season of Thanksgiving and this this season is one where I try to be thankful for all the blessings in in my life and my family. And I thought, gosh, twelve years of serving on council, I've had a privilege to do that and I'm very thankful for that, thankful for the residents for voting for me. And again, it's been really a lot of fun in some respects, but challenges as well. But we're not in this alone, any one of us. So, I appreciate all the way the council has has worked well together and time goes on, we we overcome these difficulties and, gosh, I kind of agree with you, we're in a really good spot now. So, yeah, besides breakfast room table just raking leaves constantly for the past couple weeks, I've had a lot of time to kind of reminisce about the past twelve years. And, you know, people ask me, how did you get into this gig on city council? I I remember I was elected as homeowners association and I tell you, that was a more difficult job than this one. My wife, Ann, is here and she can tell you the things we had to deal with. But it was, that kind of was a good experience in the sense that, you know, leadership and trying to, I think I had calmed some people there as well. And then, you know, our son played knothole baseball, the Loveland Rec League, and got to know other people. And then, we went to church for many years at Loveland High Methodist Church and one person in particular was very instrumental in putting her arm around me and saying, you should be running for council, and that was Paula Leifer. And she actually called me today, said she wanted to be here, but she wasn't feeling well, she's under the weather. But I I really am grateful to her, she set a really good example for for me. Aside from her, Brad Greenberg was someone that was instrumental in helping me get involved in the city, put me on some committees when he was the mayor. And one of them was the the income tax review. And I remember that was a hornet's nest there, because we didn't want to raise taxes and we had to come up with good reasons of how we were going to proceed. And we did that successfully. But, yeah, I served on Law and Ordinance in civil service upon his appointments. Just want to thank others that have been, you know, the reason I've done this and have encouraged me along the way. Heather Russell, Rob Weiskirber, Dave Bednar, Brent Zuck, and of course, my biggest supporter has been my wife and family, Ann is is here. And I I just need to mention also Frank Klein as well. He was very helpful to me, because I sat next to him and I didn't know what I was doing for a year or two. And he was very helpful in instructing me on how to handle things. And Joe, I have a lot of respect for you. I think you you work hard for your clients and I'd like to say Loveland's your favorite client, so I'm going to hold you to that. But, yeah, I also have been tappeding other sources of, you know, like institutional knowledge. We have a former council member here, Todd Osborne, you you knew a lot, you know a lot. And over the years, I've appreciated your your involvement in the city. So, yeah, besides those reminiscences, remnants, what do you call it, reminiscences?
Whatever you want.
Yeah, whatever. I kind of thought of, well, yeah, twelve years, there's, I identified like there were three transformative events for this city. And I I know there's a lot of controversy that was existing at the time, but I think over the course of time, it's proven to be quite the catalyst of downtown, and that is Loveland Station. I mean, that was happening when I, it already was underway, but I, when I got on it, we had to make take some, make some votes on on that and especially changes to the station. But say what you want, I think it has served the catalyst for for strong downtown development. A lot of what we have now wouldn't be there but for that. The second big event, of course, was May twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, the fire. And that really brought the community together. Galvanized people to work with each other, to meet the needs of people and just get us thinking, I think, more about how valuable downtown is and this this city in general. And then, I think the third most transformative event, not necessarily in order by number, but Dave Kennedy is becoming our city manager. I think Dave's been so smart, he's humble, he's had a vision, he works incredibly hard and he's very effective. And and so, I want to point to that. You know, cities have either a strong mayor or a city manager, which is kind of referred to as a strong city manager. I don't know as if it makes a difference in Loveland, because we've we've had great mayors, including Kathy Bailey here, and we've also had great city managers. And so, between, you know, that and just kind of the evolution of a council that has made, like, good decisions, primarily because staff brings us the right information and helps us make the decisions, I think Loveland's future is is incredibly bright. And I would want to welcome new members to council. Diedrich, congratulations on your victory. And Sherry Hamlin as well, although I know there's, I guess, a vote that's or a counting of votes that needs to take place. And then, Adam Jarenak, I don't think he's here tonight, but I think just, you know, just, you know, just in terms of wisdom, words, final words of wisdom, successful communities and successful organizations are marked by several, I think, characteristics that I just want to touch upon for two minutes here. And it's kind of been mentioned, uh, by Neil, and I think he's absolutely right. You know, it, to be on council and to be effective, you got to put your ego aside. You don't toot your own horn. You don't think you know everything. Not that, you know, that's what everybody does, but we've had people that have not, I think, tried to coalesce and work collaboratively and it doesn't work. Um, so I, I think, you know, working collaboratively and developing consensus, talking to people who know stuff, especially our city council, is, is invaluable, um, to try to understand, which will take some time, how, you know, you've been observing the city a long time, um, so is Adam, uh, but there's a lot that you still don't know. And again, everybody in, in this room, uh, that's on staff or on council or is from our safety departments, they, they will be willing to talk to you and they are a font of knowledge and I hope you tap into that. Um, so I just would say, you know, talk to each other, talk to your fellow council members frequently. Even when there's, you know, hard feelings or your feelings are hurt, you got to do that. You got to maintain the relationship. Uh, this council's been good at smiling and laughing and, uh, having fun. And I, I would encourage that to be a hallmark of, of future councils. Um, you know, you'll, your, your, most of your work done for the city is, takes place outside this room. So, uh, that's those conversations you have to have with other council members, with staff, uh, that's vitally important. And so, you know, you're, you're a caretaker, not only of the past, but the present and the future. And I know you take your job seriously. Um, lastly, I just want to say, no, I, I, knowing what the, I was on the agenda, it's, is, is I look at the fiscal report that Mark Medlin put together and, and he's talking about the twenty, twenty-six budget, uh, operating budget and then, um, some other matters. Um, you've got to recognize from looking at those documents, including some of the graphs, that it's a story of great success in the city. Uh, year after year, we've been raising uh, the amount of revenues the city receives. We've, uh, kept debt down. We're got planned to, to, to end a lot of it in the future, which is great. Capital improvements are, are way up. Um, our property values have held and are up as well. So I, I'm, I'm proud of that. And I think you all should be proud of that achievement. And, um, I hope it continues. And I know, um, you know, our seats will be filled in years to come with others that I hope will also keep Loveland on that track. So, um, I'm off to retirement and, uh, I'll still be around though. I'm, I'm, I'm going to work on some committee, committees. And, um, I'm going to miss the staff and I am basically, uh, just incredibly grateful at this time of the year and at this time of, of my life, um, that, especially for those that voted me, voted me into this office. And I hope I did a decent job. And with that, I'll say thank you and see you around.
The chief's going to help me out here. Um, as a department head who lived in the dark times, I'm so glad that, uh, Ted was there to bring us to the light because, uh, um, you know, a lot of people look to the fire department and the police department and, uh, to calm their days. And it's great to have, uh, Ted was there to, to calm things for our city, um, years ago. And we really appreciate that. And all of that success you talk about is the foundation that council people have supplied to us over the years and to build a community. And thank you very much for that. Uh, you've been a, a great asset for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for this. It's awesome.
All right, let's show a picture.
Okay.
Hold your.
We never do that.
Hold, hold something. John, can we do a picture? Yes, you can do it. All right, can we get to some business now? All right, so we have the minutes from the November twelfth, five meeting. Do we have any changes, additions to those?
Move to approve is written. Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Yes.
For Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Motion for seven to zero.
We have a second reading of an ordinance. Can we go ahead and read it, please?
Ordinance amending section one five five point zero nine, ratified ordinances of Loveland, Ohio.
All right, we spoke about this last time. Is there any further comment? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-five is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Braun?
Oh, you want me to review this? Um, so this is a resolution approving an agreement for our new mayor's court magistrate. Um, it's going to be Russell Mock. We had to switch magistrates to our mayor's court unexpectedly because our current magistrate, who you approved just a few months ago, is now coming to work at our office. That creates a conflict of interest for him. So I will say that we're picking up a really good individual, but we're also going to have someone with a great wealth of experience. Um, we're very lucky to have, um, I'll refer to him as Judge Mock, who previously served both on the municipal court and on the first district court of appeals, um, who's willing to take on this role. It just so happens that he does other communities and has this opening. So we need for you to approve this agreement. We're doing the exact same terms that we had for our prior magistrate. And I think that his experience will bring a lot of help to our court, particularly given that we are now, um, as we've kind of come out of that COVID period, we're now also picking back up, um, taking our criminal citations through a mayor's court. And I think his experience will be invaluable with that.
All right, Ted, do you have any questions or comments? Read the resolution, please.
Resolution approving an agreement with Russell J. Mock to serve as magistrate of the city of Loveland Mayor's Court.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-six is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Weinich?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, recently, the state of Ohio, uh, passed House Bill ninety-six, which in, in that House bill was, um, a, part of the Ohio Revised Code, uh, nine point six four, requiring every, every political subdivision to now have a cybersecurity policy in place by January one, twenty twenty-six. Um, as you know, this has been at the forefront of a lot of stuff we've been doing. See it in the budget that's coming through tonight. Um, there's a, a line item essentially for advancing our cybersecurity posture. Uh, but we needed to paper something. We don't have any, we didn't have a clear policy, um, basically on the books, um, which will also meet the requirements for the state of Ohio. Um, our posture's been good. Don't get, don't get me wrong. We've been doing things already that they're looking for, uh, multi-factor authentication. We've been putting that in place. We've got, uh, antivirus, all that kind of stuff that most, most communities and most places have been doing for a while. Um, but what we identified in this policy is kind of some of the things going forward, uh, which is, um, one of the big things is annual training, um, incident response. So when we have an issue, if, if there's an issue, hopefully not, if there's an issue, how we respond to it, um, and what the protocol is, uh, with notifying the state. Um, and then obviously just continued advancement on our protection of our, our systems, our back wall, or our backbone, our firewalls and all that good stuff. So as we talked about, we're going to be, um, improving that and, and, and advancing that with our IT third-party Velocor. They've got a very robust program that they've essentially laid out to us, um, on what they, what they see going forward. So we're really excited about that. Um, but with that, this is a resolution, um, to adopt the cybersecurity policy for the city of Loveland.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Hart?
Just, just so I'm completely clear, this is, this is just a policy. This is not an actual cybersecurity package software.
Correct. This is a, correct. So, um, this is just a policy. Um, there's very vague guidelines out there from the state on what this policy needs to include. Um, we've kind of done our own kind of research, um, and, and figured out what they want in this. So this will, this likely is going to be a living document that you may see again when we potentially, uh, change the policy for what the state may be looking for. Uh, but no, this is simply a policy, not any type of contract with Velocor or any package.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
You just mentioned that, that this is a state mandate. Is there any review that they make on a regular thing, uh, basis or things you're going to have to submit to them? How does it work?
So as of now, there is nothing that they've laid out. This, I believe it was passed, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was passed sometime in August. And, um, it's kind of been, it's like a lot of things unfortunately that get put into place. There's not a whole lot of background information on what they're going to be doing down the road. So as of now, um, they have not said that there, it's part of any type of audit or anything. They simply have said by January one, every political subdivision must have a cybersecurity policy in place. So we're ready if they come and ask for it.
Any other questions? Read the resolution, please.
Resolution adopting a cybersecurity policy for the city of Loveland. Call the roll. Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-seven is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Medler?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and residents. For you is a resolution to pay for our budgeting software, ClearGov, which we have used for a few years now and has saved us an awful lot of time and headaches as opposed to the old system of just using spreadsheet all the time. So it's been very helpful product. This is the last year of the initial agreement phase, which kept things flat at twenty-six thousand four hundred. The agreement does continue, but just has for three percent increases after this. So this year will be the same amount at twenty-six thousand four hundred. And twenty twenty-seven, we'll see a three percent increase up to twenty-seven thousand one ninety-two. So since this is above the city manager's purchasing threshold of fifteen thousand, we are bringing it to you as a resolution for you to consider.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Mr. Hart?
Uh, I just want to say from a finance commission standpoint, um, this, this software has made it, and I think Mr. Player would agree, this software has made it much, much easier for, for us to operate. I think it has also, uh, saved a ton of time, um, and thus, uh, money in terms of, um, how much time Mr. Medler and his, his staff are working through the budget and preparing all these documents or finance commissions, all kinds of stuff. So, um, it's, it's also provided a great deal of transparency for our residents. So, um, I think it's been well worth the process, the, the purchase that we made a few years ago and, uh, we'll continue to do it.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Mr. Bateman?
Just a question, uh, going forward, you mentioned that this will be, uh, renewing at the three percent increase year over year. Is there any opportunity for us to go back to the table and try to negotiate a, you know, a, a, a term rate like we'd had in the past? Or is that something to be determined in the not-too-distant future?
I think we all, I always have options. I think right now, three percent inflation on software is amazing. So, but then we, there also might be some other options where, you know, everybody has, every software has different modules that, hey, you can use this, or you can use this, or maybe I don't want to use this module anymore. So as things change, that opens it up to different negotiations. So it's something we could look at.
Okay. That is curious. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing payment of annual license support and maintenance fees for the city's budgeting software.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Motion for seven, oh, sorry. Resolution ninety-eight is adopted by a vote of seven.
Mr. Kennedy?
The Ohio Revised Code, um, so the city has, uh, properties that we give, uh, CRAs, which stands for Community Reinvestment Area. That is the city's largest, most valuable, most beneficial tax payment tool that we have. It's an economic development tool that we, the city will utilize. Uh, the, uh, CRAs can have a pretty significant impact on our taxing authorities such as LSA and school district. So the Ohio Revised Code dictates that any, uh, business, uh, within existing CRA whose payroll exceeds two million dollars in any given year, the city is then required to, uh, co-share the income tax revenue, payroll tax revenues with the school district. For twenty twenty-four, we have three companies with, uh, active CRAs whose payrolls exceeded two million for a total payroll tax to the city of one sixty-three oh one four. With that, uh, the city will then, uh, this resolution would authorize, uh, the city to, uh, distribute, make a dis- just disbursement to the school district in the amount of eighty-one thousand five oh seven.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of revenue sharing distribution payments to Loveland City School District relative to various community and reinvestment area exempted properties as required pursuant to section five seven zero nine point eight two of the Ohio Revised Code.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Uh, abstaining as it pertains to my employer.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-nine is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Kennedy?
So, uh, Mark and I are tag team on this. So the, uh, twenty twenty-six budget is complete and received a recommendation of approval from the Finance Commission. We just wanted to touch on a couple of the highlights of the, uh, twenty-six budget. Budget includes, uh, thirty-three million two hundred and forty thousand five hundred and six dollars in, uh, revenues, uh, one of the highest in recent memory. That includes an estimated seven point two five million dollars in income tax, which is three million dollars higher than it was just a decade ago. That's a significant increase, uh, in the city's general fund revenue, which has allowed the city to do quite a few, uh, items. Uh, the general fund also benefits from its thirteenth consecutive year of an increase in real estate tax, which is, uh, one million five ninety, uh, one million five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This is based on increased valuation, which is, as Vice Mayor said, uh, we're at a time now when we're not seeing other subdivisions anywhere near the magnitude. We are a community clearly in the midst of an infill stage and we still see our valuations increasing. That's investments downtown. That's investments in the Commerce Park. That is a higher value of the homes that we do have constructed. All of that correlates to a steady increase in valuation, uh, for the city. Couple other highlights in the twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, city council's, uh, WMR has proven to be extremely beneficial to the city. Uh, not only, um, does it allow the city to be able to take on all, uh, water main replacements projects, uh, without securing any debt. But what we're seeing is, uh, we're starting to see the water debt that sort of was crippling, the water funds, uh, begin to retire. We saw another drop-off this year. Three point six million dollars in water debt will retire over the next decade. That will significantly help the water fund and will allow the city to control, uh, water rates. That is extremely important. And we're seeing it happen. Uh, Mark and I just went over those funds. Uh, same with, uh, another initiatives council did. That very modest stormwater increase that they made last year was, uh, very beneficial in stabilizing the water, the stormwater fund. Stormwater fund also has, uh, significant debt. We're hoping that we can continue. It plays a very It plays a very active role in a lot of ca- capital projects. And, uh, uh, so that will see 865,000 roll off in the next 10 years. Uh, the 26 budget, uh, includes personnel costs, uh, rate 3% increase rate that council passed earlier this fall. There are no positions being added to the 26, uh, budget, keeping our current, uh, FTEs at 59. Uh, capital projects are obviously a highlight of any budget for the city. Uh, Loveland Madera Road Phase One will begin this year. Uh, going back for master plans since this city been doing master plans, uh, for decades. This city has been doing, uh, looking at, uh, how and why and what they can do to Loveland Madera Road. So in 2026, that'll finally begin. Uh, this will be first of three phases. Chris has done a wonderful job of advancing these projects. So that is a probably one of the most significant capital projects happening this year. The road program will get 880,000 right at what is recommended. That will bring the total since 2020 to 6.8 million. I would say that the road program, the WMR are perfect examples of this council looking at two problems that they had. Uh, water debt, uh, roads that were deteriorating, coming up with a plan and fixing it. Uh, 880 is the line that was recommended. We would anticipate being able to stay at that. Pedestrian connectivity remains a focus. Oak, uh, sidewalks will be installed from Oakland Road to White Pillars. City will invest in Nisbet Phillips and Lever Park. If awarded funding, the city will expand its green space by four acres with the purchase of property on Riverside Drive. City will also purchase, uh, vehicles for the LPD, LSFD and Public Works. Make traffic improvements with traffic signal modifications at West Loveland and Lebanon and will continue making divestments in the downtown. Capital projects also include engineering to, for advancing future projects. That is obviously highlighted in this city, uh, with engineering for P-phosphor remediation from the city's water supply. Another, uh, project that will be fully funded through EPA funding that, uh, Chris worked with to get for the city. That is a critical, critical part, I think, that puts the city in a perfect position to be right where we need to be by the deadline. Also, the city will advance, uh, the second phase of Loveland Madera Road this year and the sidewalks on State Route 48 for all of the Warren County residents. Uh, just to summarize before Mark jumps in, I counted 13 city employees participate in the budget process on top of the Finance Commission. Uh, that is a significant team that we do, that budget software has been a game changer. We don't all have to sit in the same room and stare at each other. Mike can get what he can get onward. The Finance Commission can go on and look at it. It is an incredible investment y'all made in that software and, uh, we're just going to keep expanding on it. Um, but the, the quarterback for the team, that's Mark. Uh, Mark's our Joe Burrow. I, I had to, I had to use a Bengals, even though he's a Browns fan because I don't really have a quarterback. So to... Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Got two Browns fans over there. So I, I do want to say that Mark's, he steers the ship. We all follow his lead for this budget and that's why the trophy case for the budget awards is what it is. Mark wants to throw in some more of the technical details. Told you I'd go for that fast.
Sure. Well, Mr. Kennedy sure certainly did get the highlights of this, but, um, yeah, I think the, the bottom line of the, of this budget is, uh, stability. So the, the city's in a very good spot right now. Uh, our income tax revenue has been, been going up and I think it's going to be, continue to be stable. Uh, we're able to have no layoffs or anything like that. Everything is stable there with our positions, with our staffing levels. 3% increases for non-bargaining people are in there. Uh, we have our, um, two bargaining units are, have their contracts up in May. So there are going to be some negotiating there for our officers and lieutenants. Uh, as I said, debt service were some that were, we've been working on trying to get that, uh, drop off. We've had, there was one item dropped off in '23. We've had some Ohio Public Works Commission items fall off, OPWC. There was two items in 2024, '25, an item came off. Uh, next year, we're going, we have a downtown revitalization balloon payment of over half a million that's going to be made. So there's, uh, some more debt coming off the books for our downtown TIF fund. So all of our efforts to get debt under control and be able to cash finance things, uh, has really started to pay off. But we're going to be keeping an eye on our real estate taxes. As you know, there's a lot of legislation going through the state affecting that. Um, affecting schools very heavily, but also for local governments. We get about 1.7 million of that to the general fund in next year's budget. And then obviously we have our fire levies. So this is very important issue for us to, to keep an eye on going forward. Another thing we keep looking at is our investments revenue. We talk about that every quarter. Uh, interest rates are going down, but, uh, thanks to some information, talking that we've had with the Finance Commission, we, we brought our Raymond James Investment, uh, analyst in to talk about that. We've been able to do our best to get more investment revenue to keep things going. Uh, as rates go down though, we're, we're reinvesting some more cash that we have on hand, not just leaving money sitting in a bank, but putting it to work so we can get some, some better interest. So we're definitely making lemonade with some lemons that we get and doing our best, not just sitting around and letting our money go, go bad. So with, I would say, oh, another, another big issue in next year is going to be finishing up payments for the fire station. That's been going very well now that the federal government is open. I was sweating a little bit for about a month there because the people of Loveland were owed about $800,000. And as I talked to Mr. Winich about that and he had to remind me, hey, you gotta watch the news because, uh, the feds were closed. Thankfully they are open again and we're getting our checks. So, um, we're, we're getting that project funded and, uh, last payments will be made next year. So with that, those are the major issues that I have for you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, you want to add anything from a Finance Commission standpoint?
Uh, sure. Um, what I would say is that, uh, I, I appreciate Mr. Medler's thoughts on, um, the word he used was stability. But I would also, and I agree with that based on all the work the Finance Commission did. But I would also say that, uh, the more important piece that I, that I, I was witness to was, um, not resting on those laurels of stability. Um, no stone was left unturned. I feel like the Finance Commission asked some, some difficult questions at times, um, in terms of what our investments are doing and what opportunities exist out there, trying to get creative, to try to continue to bring in some more money here and there. Not all of them were possible, but, you know, until you ask the question, you don't know. So, um, folks that are really, really invested in the city and really invested in the city's finances, um, and, and I appreciate Mr. Medler and Mr. Kennedy sitting there and, and kind of helping bring clarity to all those things and, and not, um, just kind of poo-pooing thoughts and saying that won't work. They actually, uh, were very, very open to those conversations. Because I feel like, uh, as he kind of, as Mr. Medler kind of alluded to as he went through, uh, where we're at, um, in terms of reinvesting in places and changing cash and in, in the council that maybe have some better returns. Those awards that we have sitting over there, they're, uh, they're, they're, they're not well-earned. They're, they're well, they're well-earned. And the stability we have is in large part due to the continued work and, um, openness to make whatever changes are possible to continue us on an upward trend. So, um, I appreciate all the work that, that the staff here did. The, Mr. Mr. Kennedy alluded to the, how many people and staff are a part of that. And then the Finance Commission also putting their time in. It's, it's three pretty heavy duty meetings that kind of make my eyes go crossed at times, but, um, but, uh, a lot of good work and I feel like, uh, the recommendation, uh, is a strong one.
Very good. Anybody have any comments or questions on this budget? Yes, Mr. Bateman?
Sure. I'll just, uh, throw my, my two cents into the, into the, uh, equation here and, and echo what Mr. Hart has said about the appreciation for the staff and, and all the hard work of the Finance Committee to go do this. And, and sort of to paraphrase what Mr. Ori said earlier, that, you know, this document really is proof positive of a, of a well-run organization. And I mean, beyond that really, uh, we, we set the, we may set the, uh, the agenda at our goal-setting sessions and throughout, you know, our, our two-year, uh, term on, on council. But it's staff that executes and implements that. And then when we can see that brought to bear in this document to show how all of that work is, is, uh, is done beyond competently, right? Competence is sort of the table stakes that the residents expect. What we, we see here is something that, that exceeds that. And I think that's through, through Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Medler, Mr. Winich's examples of, of innovative thinking, uh, problem solving, rolling up your sleeves and, and, uh, digging in to find a solution and doing it with, with good customer service and keeping the, uh, uh, the resident, um, and what's right, um, you know, front and center. And so I think, I don't know if this is a, a quirk of the schedule, um, but I think it's really terrific that we, we get to, uh, vote on this first reading and essentially pass the baton to the next council to, uh, to sign this, uh, this budget and, and CIP, uh, you know, into, into law. I think that's a great way for us to, to, uh, to pass on this, this torch of, of, uh, setting a vision and doing it with proficiency and innovation. And so I'm looking forward to, uh, supporting that when we vote at our next session.
Anyone else? Mr. Goodyear?
I, I also, you know, I read this entire document, all the information we have here regarding, uh, the budget and the CIP. And, and I also want to, uh, thank city staff, excuse me, and the Finance Committee for all the work. I mean, it's a, it's a tremendous amount of work that goes into this, obviously. But, you know, the budget, I think people say budget is like the story of the city, right? And this story is very impressive. I think that not only from a financial standpoint, um, we have, uh, growing revenue. We have, uh, responsibility in the way we handle our money and the way we invest our money. But also we have a real laser focus on achieving goals that the community has asked us to achieve. And when you really look at, at all the different items that are going forward in this city over the next, that have gone forward and are in progress and will be in progress over the next, uh, two, three years, i- it's amazing. And so I, I read this and frankly, it's just so impressive to me to, to see where we are, to see what's, what's done. And, you know, obviously, as Mr. Bateman said, uh, you know, council sets the goals and we provide kind of the macro idea of what's happening. But the micro work, uh, is done by staff and by, um, the Finance Committee and it's, it's just incredibly impressive and I appreciate it very much and I'm, um, very happy with what we see here.
Anyone else have any comment? All right. I, I would just say, Mr. Kennedy and I talk pretty much every morning and, uh, for months and months and months, at some point in the conversation every day would be, well, I'm just working on the budget. And I think Mr. Medler probably could have said the same thing, um, for all those months and, and everyone else in staff that played their part. And, uh, uh, this is a tremendous effort to put this together into this nice little package that we get to look at, um, all tied up in a bow. But this was a tremendous effort. What, what I appreciate is the balance that this shows. Um, it has been, I think, a huge goal of this council over the last several years to live within our means. I know we had an opportunity, there was that, that water main break, um, up on Cherokee years ago that was a total mess. Chief helped step in on that to just get water to that, to that development for, for, it seemed like, I don't know how long it was, but it was not days. It was a while. Um, and we went for a huge grant to try to, to, to take care of that project. We didn't get that grant. Um, and whatever that organization was, might have been OPWC, I'm not sure, but they came back later and said, well, we can give you a million dollars, um, loan, interest-free. And boy, we talked about that and decided, uh, it's still a million dollars we have to pay back. If, if this can wait, let's just wait. And what, we ended up paying very little on that project, um, ultimately, because we did hold and, um, made do until we could, could get the money and the funding in place. So that's just one example of, we don't just see something shining and go for it. We, um, really try to be smart about what projects we're doing and we're still able to live within our means and have all these projects, um, that you see reflected in this budget. And I think that water fund is, um, one of the, the proudest things that, that I think that we've accomplished as a council. And that was not without its share of angst. There were many meetings and conversations about that because we were raising fees. But paying hundreds of thousands of dollars was $600,000 at one point a year, just on debt service is just not any way to run the city. And we are slowly but surely bringing that down. When you look at the chart, it's, it's going to take a minute, but when we get to 2040, we're down to 17,000. And, and that'll drop off after that. And it, now you've got another 600,000 to actually put towards the water projects, which as you said, maybe that changes what we're charging. Um, certainly what we would look at. So that's our goal with every aspect of this city, including capital projects. And, and as you said, the stormwater is, is, we're, we're headed that direction. So I'm, I'm happy that the discipline that we've shown and the balance that this budget shows, that we're still able to accomplish these, these, what people I think have come to expect now is yearly big infrastructure projects, which didn't used to be the case and, and we're managing to do them and deliver, but live within our means. So that, that's a credit, I think, to, to this council a- a- as far as the policy perspective, but certainly to our staff for, for finding ways to make that happen. So we're very proud of this budget. So yes, this is a first reading only. I'll go ahead and read it.
Orders to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Loveland, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Mr. Winich?
As you know, several, over a decade ago, um, the residents of Loveland voted to implement a aggregation program for both gas and electric. Um, our current gas contract is up at the end of March. Um, so as you know, we, uh, utilize a third-party consultant in, um, to, to help us out with the bidding process. Um, we went out for bids, um, only received two bids back, quite frankly, that were worth it. Um, Direct Energy and Nordic Energy. Um, some of the other bigger players like Constellation Energy and IGS. Um, Constellation's currently not offering an aggregate program in the gas, gas realm. And IGS kind of responded with their pursuing other opportunities. So it's really int- it's interesting out there right now on the gas side. Um, but the positive is, in comparison to what we saw with the electric, do anticipate us hovering right around the same rates that we were at for the last two years. Uh, for the last two years, we've been about, um, 5.94, uh, mil- 1,000 cubic feet. And that, we think, we hope, um, is going to be close, right around $6 also this time. So the reason I can't give you an exact number, if you recall when we did this last time, and it may have even been the time before that, um, we elected to use what they call the NYMEX plus, uh, formula, which is basically, it's like, it's like watching the stock market in a sense and you actually, um, lock in your pricing that day. So we do believe, um, it's going to be, based on the trends, it's going to be right around six. When we did this, um, two or three weeks ago, it was actually below the 5.94 what we're at. So we're, we're pretty confident in that. In that chart, you kind of see how that, um, how that rate is broken down. Um, there's basically that retail adder, that's coming from, that's kind of the, the component that Direct Energy is, is taking back, right? So, um, that's in essence, that's the number that they were kind of bidding on, that we were comparing numbers, numbers to. Um, with that said, you see there's options for one year, two year, three year, four year. Um, in our conversations with IEC, we kind of talked about, you know, I had first looked at it and I said, well, why, why wouldn't we just sign a four year? And their, their kind of answer to this and their outlook is, they don't see an upward push for the next five to 10 years on the gas side, which basically what I'm saying there is, there's a possibility in two years, it's going to be a very similar rate or potentially low. Um, so that's why they're recommending, and they've recommended to several other communities that they represent, one actually right next to us that is doing the exact same thing right now, Hamilton Township. Um, they are recommending, we look at a two-year, uh, contract, which, once they ran through the numbers and showed us kind of those charts, which are all kind of in your, in your packet, it does make sense and it makes sense to staff. Um, so with that said, um, that's pretty much all I have for the information on it. Like I said, I can't give an exact number because what this agreement is going to say is going to give the city manager the ability to sign that and it's a day of sort of thing. But if for some crazy reason it would come back way above, you know, way out of, out of range, we will come, we will sit on it, not, not sign and we'll come back to council with an update. But this gives us the ability, if I can get this over to them tomorrow, we can lock in our price before the holiday and before the cold weather. We want to get it in because it is volatile due to the, due to the, uh, changing weather patterns. Um, so with that, I'll take any questions on it that I hopefully can answer.
Any questions? Mr. Hart?
Um, is there a, is there like a federal government impact on this? No reason I ask that because two years keeps us in the same federal administration. No reason I ask that, because two years keeps us in the same federal administration, three years potentially takes us out of that, into a volatile time from a federal side. Is there a benefit? Does that impact anything, or is that really not a?
Yeah, so one of the impacts on the upward push is, right now, they're opening up additional areas for drilling, right? So areas that we're going to be using our own domestic natural gas. So with that said, to your point, I do believe this administration, yes, I think you've seen in general, prices either similar or come down potentially. So to answer your question, yes, I think with a change in administration, there could be a potential change, but as you look back on that trend line, so two years ago, we were coming into a new administration, and we're basically at the same price that we're at now. So it's tough to say, it's always tough to say, but I think based on what they're looking at and what kind of they're analyzing, they feel that the two-year is kind of where we want to be.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, and you are requesting this be done as an emergency for obvious reasons to be that latitude?
Yes.
Okay, let's just go ahead and read the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to support the continuation of governmental natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 4929.26 of the Ohio Vice Code, further directing the city manager to enter into a supply agreement with Direct Energy Services to continue a natural gas aggregation program beyond March 31st, 2026, when the current supply agreement ends and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Ordinance 100 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Kennedy?
For you tonight is an ordinance for a first reading to reduce the speed along a portion of State Route 48 slash Oakland Road, basically approximately a little over 1,600 feet from the city's corporation line to the east, to where it currently begins at, where it currently is, 35 miles an hour. We're actually addressing this for two particular reasons. One is for safety concerns. I was just thinking, when I got here in 2014, Chief Huber and I were dealing with pretty continual accidents in that bend, in that area coming in from the township. First Saturday in October, we had another whopper up there and pretty much everything in between. So we're trying to attack this for safety reasons. We're actually working with, working with Steve Kelly with the township. They follow a little different rules as far as some signage, to advance signage on the curve ahead. And then we can on our own, if we work within ODOT, the city has the ability to, on our own, within the Ohio Vice Code, working with Joe and making a determination, the city can make the speed limit change ourselves within the city limits. Second of all is the capital aspect of what's going on up there. Two things, we will hopefully in the spring be bringing you a contract for the sidewalks on State Route 48, be Phase One, that will go to the entrance of White Pillars. And Phase Two, which is the other capital project, will go and right into the Grayville Park that the county is working on right now, which will be one of the more, it is very impressive what they are planning to put up there. And we will actually align that second phase with the trailhead. And then if you tie that with all of the sidewalks up Loveland Miamiville Road, all the sidewalks that are included in the Claremont County Pedestrian Connectivity Plan, and two schools, we'll be setting up a path where the, quite a few people are going to be able to walk to this incredible county park that's going to be on this 200 acres of land. So with that, we need to start taking some changes now. So one of those is going ahead and reducing that speed to 35. It's recommended by the fire chief, by the police chief, the city engineer, public works director. Chris and I will be working on some RRFPs, will be part of the sidewalk project. So with that, we think this is probably, this is a good project. We'll keep working with the township to do some things out in the township to advance that speed. The curve ahead signs, we're working to get those to be RRFPs, where those will begin to flash. There's the potential that the chevrons on the guardrails can actually be flashed. And then, of course, we'll have reduced speed ahead signs. So this would just be a first reading, puts us in line to have all this finished before the sidewalks go, and we'll keep working on the other side of it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor?
I just, I think this was, this speed reduction's a great idea, and I believe we've had people come in and talk to us about that. But again, to the Chief Huber's observation, the city prioritizes safety, and I think this is a prime example of that.
Anyone else? Well, I drive this often, and I actually like it at 45, but it makes total sense to move to 35, so I do support it. All right, let me read first reading, please.
Ordinance approving the reduction of speed limit on a portion of State Route 48, Oakland Road, from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour within the City of Loveland Corporation limits.
Thank you. Mr. Medler?
Thank you, Mayor. So these, we have two items for our quarterly utility assessments for unpaid utility bills. First one is for Hamilton County, has 11 items on it. The second one, there originally were three, but this morning I was informed that the first two items have been paid. So for the Warren County, we just need to assess the third item on that one. So again, we request these as an emergency, just for our basic process.
All right. Any questions? Read the first ordinance, please.
Ordinance assessing liens for unpaid utility bills on property in Hamilton County, owed to the City of Loveland, declaring an emergency.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Ordinance 102 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Medler?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is making adjustments to our current year 2025 budget. So what we do every year is making sure that our purchase orders and our expenses do not exceed the budget that we've laid out. So this is kind of a balancing act, so we have cash, that obviously we can't spend more cash than we have, but we also cannot spend more than the budget. So this is an amendment to clean up the budget, just make sure everything is on the up and up. And how we appropriate here in the City of Loveland, for example, in the general fund, you don't, we don't just say, okay, here's the general fund budget. There are many different buckets within the general fund. I think about 18 different budgets that all of those have to be budgeted and be on the positive side. So there's a lot of adjustments to be made just to make sure that we are in line with Ohio Vice Code.
All right. Any questions? Okay, this is not as an emergency, but by our charter, it only requires one reading, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance.
Ordinance to make revisions to appropriations for expenditures for the City of Loveland, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2005.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Ordinance 103 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, announcements. First, there will not be a council meeting next Monday, December 1st. As we know, there's a mandatory recount from our election, and is it, Warren and Claremont have said that they will do theirs on next Monday and Tuesday, the first and second. We don't even know when Hamilton County is going to do it. Has to be done by Wednesday, Thursday, something like that. But we don't yet know who's going to be sitting here, although we have an idea, but we cannot have the meeting until it is certified and the recount is complete. So instead, the organizational meeting will be at 6 o'clock on December 9th. So we'll have to do that right before the next meeting. Okay? 2025 Annual Little Miami River Chamber Alliance Awards were held a few weeks ago. Mr. Kennedy and Captain Gangwar and I attended that. As Mr. Kennedy knows, they get a little competitive about how many Loveland businesses win because it's two townships and the City of Loveland. So I'm going to tell you, I think all but one, or Loveland that won, and the one that wasn't Loveland was sitting at our table, so it was okay.
She counted that one.
I didn't count that one, but that was okay. All right, so I'm just going to let you know, because it's kind of cool, all of the businesses that won. The Randy K. Stanifer Health Wellness and Fitness Business of the Year was Spenga. Beautification Award went to Cardinal Land Conservancy. Business Community Advocate Award went to Time Savers Heating and Cooling. I think they're actually located physically in Miami Township, but the owner lives in Loveland and is active on our committees. Heart of Service Award to all the ingredients. Patricia Futter Community Involvement Award, Doug Portman. The Nonprofit of the Year Award went to Do It For Jack, the Jack Quell Foundation. Woman-owned Business of the Year, Curated Fine Furnishings and Design. Excellence in Social Media Award went to Positive Tigers. Isn't that the school? Isn't that something affiliated with the school in some fashion?
It's got to be.
It's got to be. Outstanding, outstanding community event, new, is the Loveland Shorts Festival. Young Professional of the Year, Kim Bailey. Totally deserved that. Chamber Choice Award, DVD Brew. Emerging Business of the Year, Rose, Rosé Boutique and Wine Bar. And Business of the Year was Cappy's, so it was almost a clean sweep, which is pretty cool. It's a very nice event. Announcements, our offices will be closed, city offices, this Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Public Works will be making one final pass through town for leaf collection. So you need to have your leaves at the curb by Monday, December 1st. Applications for committee openings will be accepted through Wednesday, December 3rd. The city's annual Christmas Tree Lighting Festival will be held on Saturday, December 6th, in downtown Loveland from 4:00 to 8:00. Some of the events include live music performed by American Idol contestant Michael Williams, special guest and emcee WLWT meteorologist Randy Rico. Santa will be visiting, live reindeer at City Hall from 4:30 to 6:30, strolling characters, gingerbread house contest displayed at City Hall, kid train rides, craft vendors, food trucks, photo opportunities, the city's 2025 Christmas ornaments, which are for sale for $10, crafts and games and other fun activities hosted by local businesses, the tree lighting and drone show begin at, the tree lighting is at 8:00. Is that right, Chief? Tree lighting is at 8:00, followed immediately by the drone show. Which we need to remind people before we do the tree, because they're all so excited about the tree, they're not looking up and over. So try to remember that. Like pointing, yelling last year. Yes, Randy needs to do it. Tell Randy to do better.
Communicate that.
Gosh.
I will not tell her to do better.
I'll tell her.
I'm just going to be honest with you, that's not good.
I'll tell her. It's all good. Okay, and then whatever else we have is on the city website as far as that event, so come on down. Anybody else have any, any announcements of any kind? All right, I do believe we have.
Kevin.
Well, you're so quiet about it. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Ping spent the afternoon in the kitchen, and so if you face a microphone, sorry for you guys, but if you face a microphone, I have some cookies before you leave. So don't leave without your cookies.
Very nice.
Nice. All right, so we need a motion for, to go into executive session. Mr. Vice Mayor, one final time?
Okay. I move to go to executive session under Ohio Vice Code, Section 121.22G1, to consider the employment of a public employee or official.
Or second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Got it.[1457.15]